I would have waited longer. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please call a roll. Two Hill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three council meeting. Approval of the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three payroll in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents. Acceptance of the Ways and Means Committee minutes for twelve, ten, twenty-two, two, six, twenty-three, two, sixteen, twenty-three, and three, nine, twenty-three. Acceptance of the Library Board minutes. Acceptance of the Carnegie Museum Board minutes. Approval of a cigarette license for Hawkeye Smoke Shop, which is under new ownership. Resolution of employment of communication specialists. Resolution of employment in the Police Department. Resolution of employment in the Park and Recreation Department. And approval of liquor license for American. And approval of total claims in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. There were no claims greater than seventy-five thousand. I move that we approve the consent agenda. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Esti, second by Ham. Any discussion?
I review all the claims and I recommend approving them.
Great, thank you. Please call a roll. Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Boy, it seems short. We have two people missing. So, great. I just want to say congratulations to Allison Hesselton for becoming a full-time communication specialist and joining our team. And our next agenda item, where we're going to congratulate Mr. Dylan Fury. We're going to swear him in right now. If he comes out. And this is on ready paper. Just come right here, front and center, and then raise your right hand. And then repeat. After me. I, Dylan Fury,
I, Dylan Fury.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially.
to the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
discharge all the duties of police officer
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
in the city of Fairfield
In the city of Fairfield.
as now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team. And unfortunately, Dylan said he didn't have any family that could make it tonight, but if you'll just talk a little bit about yourself so we get to know you. Where you grew up, family, what you've been doing.
I'm originally from Armstrong, Iowa. It's a little town up on the Minnesota border. I joined the Army National Guard when I was seventeen, a junior. I've moved down here because my family lives close. I am very excited to be here in Fairfield.
Great. Thank you. Again, welcome aboard and look forward to seeing you in a uniform. So we are going to move on to public forum and appearances. First up is Mr. Scott Campbell. Is he here tonight? If not, we will move on. Matt Welch, Powerwagon Rally. Okay, so I know he's requesting a street closure. Should we go ahead and do that?
Is it the same as before? I haven't looked at it, actually.
Correct.
Except for he asked for the adjustments, that it be completely blocked off on all four things. If you read the writing around the edges, that's different than before.
What's the shaded area at the bottom here on Burlington?
That's just the other side. There's like parking on the south side now, and that's just the street.
Are they going to put cars there?
The shading is where the street is.
But do they put cars on Burlington? They're doing to put cars on the three sides and then outline the blocks.
He might have assumed that there was parking throughout there. I don't know.
Well, I'd recommend the traditional pattern that we used.
It's not until June tenth. Should we just wait until he comes and talks to us? We'll have time to approve it.
Yeah, so we've always been able to drive through, correct?
No.
Not on everything but the south. I mean, we've been able to drive through south on Burlington, but the rest of it's been closed off.
It has been?
Yes.
Okay, so this is normal.
No, he wants, it looks like he wants Burlington closed, too.
That's what it looks like, but I can't approve that.
He wants the, yes, the accesses from the Burlington end closed, along with the top accesses on Broadway, closed.
So then I can use Broadway on the east and west sides?
I can't answer that. I'm just telling you what I understood from the drawing here.
It would be nice if you could come and speak to us, since we have questions.
Yeah, we have time. Why don't we just let, wait until he can make it?
Okay. Yeah. You want to contact him and see if he can come next time? Okay, so we'll just go on. Okay. Maybe they're planning a big one this year. Okay, next is Ann Walton of the Sierra Club, and she's going to talk about the Inflation Reduction Act workshop that she's been working on. And I told her, you know, when she first started doing it, that she wanted to have it here, that the city could help host it and welcome the people to Fairfield, so.
Thank you, Mayor Boyer, and council members. For the record, Ann Walton, Southeast Iowa Sierra Club. So, just to give you a little bit of background, for those who are not tracking what's going on at the federal level. In August, two thousand and twenty-two, the Inflation Reduction Act was passed by Congress, which allowed for about five billion dollars. And a lot of that money is earmarked, more than forty percent of that, to be directed at rural underserved communities, of which we qualify. It's also meant to complement the infrastructure bill that was passed in two thousand and twenty-one. And that infrastructure bill was for one point two trillion dollars. And so they were built to complement each other, both of these bills. Well, just as this money is directed at rural America and underserved communities like our own, we didn't want to, we at Sierra Club, didn't want to see Fairfield, Jefferson County, and our surrounding counties throughout Southeast Iowa lose the opportunity to access these funds. They're really directed at all sectors of our community, from farmers. There's grants, there's loans, there's tax relief, and various other forms of funneling money to the farmers, who are receiving at least fifty percent of their income from farm-producing. For schools, as far as buses, retrofitting, fitting buildings for weatherization purposes, for solar. They're directed at nonprofits, at municipalities, at state and local government, and homeowners, individuals. There's opportunities to access the funds for a whole array of things, but including the purchase of appliances that are more energy efficient. For instance, for weatherization of one's house, for installing heat pumps, solar panels, that kind of thing. So it really hits all sectors of our community, and we didn't, at Sierra Club, didn't want to lose this opportunity for our community and the broader sense of the word to benefit from these funds. We have been working on this for almost five months now, trying to put together what we're calling a clinic, AKA workshop. I started talking to Connie about it in November and wanted the city of Fairfield to host this event. We've gotten a lot of traction, and we have our little team of four people from the Sierra Club, who've been working on this for four months, five months, have, we've participated in more webinars than you can imagine. And we still are not completely clear on how this money is going to get to everybody. We've also tracked down representatives from all the different federal agencies that are, the money's being funneled through. So as you can see, I think Connie sent you something maybe last week, and also from this poster that we're circulating, that we've got USDA, Calming State Energy Office, FEMA, NRCS, EPA, IRS. This did not come with any ease. To get these representatives here, we probably tracked it and talked to seventy or so different government representatives. But it's set up so that the morning session, it's a full-day session on April twenty-eighth at Jefferson County Fairgrounds. It's set up so that the morning is an information session whereby all these different representatives from the federal agencies will present on their piece of the pie. And then the afternoon is a clinic, so you can go talk to these representatives of the different agencies to better understand how you access these funds, whether you're eligible, what is the process for moving forward. We're also assembling lists of grant writers, for those who want to enlist grant writers. We're trying to make it an easy path forward, so there's no reason that our community can't come to this event and say, I walked away learning a lot more, and I realize what the path forward is for accessing the funds. So, we, as in any event like this, it's going to cost money. We have a budget of about forty-six hundred dollars. And I didn't check today, to be honest, last week, we had about twenty-eight hundred dollars. We would like to ask the city to participate by, we would like to request fifteen hundred dollars from the city. And that will just cover our costs, hopefully. Take us up close to that, so that we don't, so Sierra Club's not having to eat all the excess costs on this.
Ann, you want to talk about who all you're inviting?
Yeah, so we are the Council of Cities we're inviting. We're inviting all the counties from throughout Iowa, the manufacturers, associations. We are targeting school districts. So we're trying to, as well as individuals and our farming community, trying to reach as many people as possible through different associations. And so we have a really pretty ambitious marketing plan that's kicked off today, as a matter of fact. And obviously, we're going to use the usual avenues of social media, print media, radio, and so forth. But this is only going to be successful if we have a lot of people coming, and that's where our efforts are focused now for the next couple of weeks.
And is this the only event of this nature in the state of Iowa addressing this issue?
There have been lots of webinars, but we don't know of another event like this that's just opened it up to the community at large and brought in so many agency representatives. So I think that's what makes it unique, is that you're able to talk directly with agency representatives that, through whom the money will be channeled. And so they will be the ones who can answer how to access those funds. So yes, I think it's unique. It's been a challenge. It's been, we originally wanted to do it in December, because some of the funds were released at the end of last year. But the more and more we talked to agencies and started to get to the people who really knew what was going on, they said, no February, no March, no April. And that's why we picked April twenty-eighth, was because a lot of the funds, some of them have been released and were past deadlines. The bulk of them are being released in February, March, and into April. And then, of course, there'll be new deadlines and new directives that are released after April as well. And once we get through this, then the question will be, should we do some, a couple of webinars after this? So that we pick up those loose pieces for the directives and the funds that came, that come after, are released after April. So it's, this is very complex. I have to say, I'm one of the people who've actually read the entire act, and I'm still spinning from doing that. But sorting this out and trying to find who exactly is eligible, what the process is for accessing those funds, and then which agency, because there's a lot of overlap between agencies. Particularly if you look at like renewable energy. That's being, the funds are being funneled through at least four different agencies, depending on who it is you are that's accessing those funds. So that's what we're trying to sort out and make it as simple as possible for the consumer.
I just want to commend Ann for doing what she's done. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I don't know anybody who has enough brain power to do it but Ann.
Well, we'll see.
So, seriously, it's, you know, and I think it's a great thing for Iowa, and particularly, there was a focus, I think, originally of Southeast Iowa, but now it's been opened up to all of Iowa.
Well, our focus is Southeast Iowa, but because some of the different associations are statewide associations, we never meant to exclude anybody, but we didn't want to take on the world either, so.
The League of Cities has put it on their calendar and putting it out in their emails as well, so.
And so, you know, when you take it to the league, when you take it to the chamber, and they send it out to their, all of the associated chambers throughout the state, they don't, you know, break it down by region.
Do you have backup plan for overflow attendance?
We would be happy. We'll figure it out if we get to that point. It's all by pre-registration, so we should have the numbers. It includes lunch. It is a thirty-five dollar charge, but that's just to recover some of the food and material charges for stuff that people will get while they're there. And it's forty dollars if you pay at the door instead of paying when you register, so, through PayPal.
So I think your request is through local option sales tax, correct?
I was going to suggest that.
Yeah.
Community betterment portion of that fund. So I'd recommend fifteen hundred dollars that I've lost to Sierra Club to support this event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Esti? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say a sign.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you, Ann.
Yeah, thank you. We really appreciate it, and I also hope that we see all or most of you, because the city will benefit from this, as well as you as individuals, so, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann, for all your work. And the rest of the team. Claudia? Probably Mark Dwyer, who's the last one. Okay, there you go. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Brad Freger from the Fairfield Journal Mission Update.
I'm still rehabbing from a broken hip, so.
Oh, that's a drag.
Put up with me, I guess.
Okay, Brad, so you've got five minutes.
I'm going to try to do it in five minutes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Council members and Mayor Boyer, thank you for giving me the opportunity to update you on the Fairfield Journal. We are Fairfield's online community newspaper with offices right across the street. Maybe you've seen our sign. However, since I broke my hip on February fifth, I haven't spent much time there. For those of you who are not familiar with the Journal, I've supplied you with three images to give you a rough idea of its current look. The first image shows the homepage, which includes a link to the Journal's event calendar, our highlights to major events, and other items of current interest on the left, with secondary highlights on the right, plus advertising and important links. The second image shows the Journal Events Calendar, which I believe to be the best and most complete events calendar in Jefferson County. On the events calendar, notice the words, "To have your event posted in the Journal calendar, click here." This link leads to a form that any business, organization, or individual can fill out to have their event posted in the calendar. The third image contains an item that I'm very proud of. It shows a picture of Rick Archer and a link to his article, "Tentative Conclusions from Buddha at the Gas Pump." I doubt any of you know, but Rick and I were not in sync on Facebook, and that's an understatement. However, one of the blessings of my broken hip was when Rick emailed me wanting to, one of our Hy-Vee fifty-fifty coupons I was offering to subscribers. This led to an email conversation, which led to another, and ultimately, we discovered that we not only had a lot in common, but that we really liked and respected each other. I asked him to write an article and then quite possibly become a columnist and write a few more. He agreed, and all it took was two people willing to have a conversation, and whatever was between us in the past was quickly forgotten. I experienced a much thing, much the same thing, when I had the opportunity to meet with the publisher of Little Village Magazine. Barbie and I had dinner with Genevieve Traynor at the Coralville Olive Garden. Little Village Magazine, available free in numerous Fairfield locations, is extremely progressive, as is Genevieve. What other chances than an extreme progressive and a constitutional conservative are going to get along in this day and age? Most people would say highly unlikely, but we did, and just like Rick and I, Genevieve and I found that we had more in common than we would have ever believed possible. And once again, we discovered that we both liked and respected each other. Near the end of the meeting, she offered to publish a major segment of our event calendar in the print edition of the Little Village Magazine, and I offered to publish a Little Village article once a month. The initial objective of the Fairfield Journal, the reason I took on this massive task, was to provide a vehicle to unify our community, bring harmony, peace, and understanding, so that we could face together the challenges that small communities across the nation are facing today. I believe strongly that getting to know each other was the key. That meant the Journal had to be a vehicle of free speech, a place where people could share their ideas, beliefs, and concerns without the fear of losing friends, clients, or their jobs. I believe that everyone should have a voice, the freedom to share. When I teach leadership, one of my major rules is, you never know where the solution will come from. If you focus on the MBA from Harvard and forget the person who got their GED, you are making a terrible mistake. The same is true in our community. To make the best decisions, you need to hear from everyone, and the Journal is the vehicle to provide a voice for everyone in our community. It hasn't been easy. We are making headway. We now have, that happened today, three hundred subscribers. I hope to have five hundred by the end of May. That's my goal, challenging. Outside of new subscribers, my next biggest hope is to have the best classified extension in Southeast Iowa. My biggest disappointment so far is to find that some of those on the right are as much against free speech as some on the left. Neither group wants those they disagree with to have a voice. Let me be clear. The First Amendment doesn't put a limit on free speech. I can't go that far. I have to make sure that the articles and comments in the Journal are respectful. You can disagree with the concept put forth in an article, and you can comment, explaining why you disagree and how you see the issue differently, but you can't attack the individual or the concept. You state your opinion, and the readers will decide whose view they want to support. That's about it. Just remember, we exist to bring services and unity to our community, through free speech and the belief that everyone has a voice that deserves to be heard. By the way, I've made this presentation available up on the Fairfield Journal. Thank you very much. And I'm going to ask if you let me leave. I almost can't stand here any longer. And, but thank you very much for this time. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
And thank you for your vision of what you're trying to do, and it's, it sounds like you've had some good experiences with it, so.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, next is our library director, Alex McUnus, and he's going to talk about the annual library report. And there are some amazing things happening, King, at the library. So pay attention.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting me to share a report for fiscal year twenty-three on behalf of the Public Library of Fairfield. Historically, the library director shares this report in August or September, after the close of the fiscal year. However, as I stepped into the role of director late last summer, I was unprepared at the time to give a presentation. Tonight, I would like to present a condensed report for fiscal year twenty-three so far, covering achievements and changes at the library, as well as a report of our strategic plan through February, two thousand and twenty-four. I would like to begin by sharing a few larger accomplishments that I was able to attain, together with the support of our Library Board of Trustees, our city government, and our community's taxpayers. Additionally, I could not have done this without our highly capable, always supportive, and hard-working library staff. When I set out to become our community's new library director, the first four goals I hope to accomplish were, one, increase the pay rate for staff at FPL to be more in line with comparable positions in other city departments. A fair pay, approaching fifteen dollars an hour or more, for all front desk staff and full-time employees. Two, adopt a fine-free policy to forgive all previous late fees and not charge any additional late fees for overdue materials. Three, increase accessibility to library materials for young people under eighteen years of age. And four, diversify our electronic resources by adding Apple computers. Within two months of my becoming director, the FPL Board was able to approve a staff reorganization and pay rate increase for all staff utilizing our library's current budget. Staff morale has improved immensely. In November of two thousand and twenty-two, and I'll just share that the highest-paying full-time staff member makes sixteen dollars an hour, and the front desk staff members start at fourteen dollars an hour. In November of two thousand and twenty-two, with FPL Board and staff approval, I rebuilt the library's borrower policy to create the new Juvenile Quick Card account, so that youth under the age of eighteen can now check out up to three library books and have access to digital resources such as eBooks and e-audiobooks without the requirement of a financially responsible parent or guardian's signature. Youth who receive this type of card will get a letter in the mail instructing a parent or legal guardian how to expand access for the youth cardholder, or the card may be canceled by the parent. And finally, in January of two thousand and twenty-three, with city council approval, FPL adopted a fine-free policy to no longer collect fees for late materials. Within the new policy, items twenty-eight days overdue will be marked "lost," and library accounts will be blocked until the replacement cost for the items is paid or the item is returned. Our adoption of fine-free policy has been very well-received in the community, with visitors telling our staff daily how much they appreciate the change. Lastly, the library has also been able to add two Apple iMac computers for patron use and an Apple Studio Computer for video and image editing through a grant from the library's foundation. As the library's former children's librarian, I have seen the immense positive impact that reading and being read to has on children. The Juvenile Quick Card account, the addition of Apple computers, which are exclusively used by our public school students and staff, and the adoption of fine-free policy, has all been to increase access to the library's resources for young people. With these new policies and resources, we are nurturing the youth of today to develop a greater love of reading and to appreciate the safety and enjoyment the library space provides. My next item is about usage My next item is about usage of the library in the county. September is National Library Card Sign-Up Month, and this past year, the library had approximately 500 community members sign up for new cards or update their account details. What we learned was that those 500 users were basically, they were pretty much our base membership. However, the library has over 10,000 users in our system, many of which became inactive during the pandemic. My initial goal was to increase active membership to 1,200 active users by 2024. Today, I'm happy to announce that we have already increased our active membership to 2,414 individual active users. Our new goal is to increase active members by 3,500 by the end of the summer reading program. Just one month ago, the FPL Board of Trustees approved new vision and mission statements for the library, which I would like to share tonight. Our library's new vision is to foster curiosity, connection, and empowerment. The mission of the Fairfield Public Library is to provide access to programs, materials, and resources that celebrate diversity, stimulate the imagination, and encourage lifelong learning. To offer a safe, comfortable place for individuals to enjoy and the community to gather, to promote better understanding of our history, meaningful endeavors today, and a more sustainable, equitable, and collaborative future. Additionally, in February, Fairfield Public Library's 2023 through 2024 strategic plan was adopted with the intention of preparing a five-year plan in winter of 2024. Our strategic plan was informed by the values we outlined in our new vision and mission statements. This same month, I was able to complete the library's lengthy reaccreditation application, securing funding for the library from the state. Additionally, the library board has developed a renewal initiative committee to coordinate and implement a number of enhancements to the library, such as upgrading all the library's interior and exterior lighting to LED, repairing and painting damaged walls, repainting the public bathroom partitions, and replacing missing tiles in the library's ceiling. The library also hopes to acquire an updated logo and marketing materials for the library in the coming year. In February, the library added a number of new digital resources that borrowers can access at home through our website. They include Free for All Jefferson County Residents, The New York Times Online, The Wall Street Journal Online, and Consumer Reports Online. In addition to these, the library also now has an ancestry.com for libraries account that can be used on-site at the library for genealogical work. Going back to the origins of our city, Fairfield has always been remarkable, and these new offerings in the library are just that. Most communities that offer these resources have a population twice our size. However, we have been able to purchase these resources through the generous financial contributions of one-time gifts directly to the library and through the support of our library's foundation. The library has newly expanded hours. We are open Monday through Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Thursdays and Fridays, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., an additional 6.5 hours each week. Most recently, I'm involved in pursuing funding to digitize the library's newspaper microfilm collection. Across the country, libraries began a concerted effort to transfer crumbling newspapers to microfilm starting in the 1970s. We are now faced with the deterioration and decomposition of microfilm, and we must act before the precious, this precious history is lost. To my knowledge, Fairfield Public Library possesses the only records of many reels of microfilm for Fairfield and the surrounding community's newspapers dating back to 1847. The historical museum has bound copies of newspapers going back to 1921. The older, the older physical copies were just too old and crumbled to the point of needing to be disposed of. So this is all we've got, from what I know, the library's microfilm. The public, the newspaper companies here in town, they don't have it. A company called Advantage Archives, based in Cedar Rapids, that has digitized microfilm for nearly all of southeast Iowa and can be viewed on their website and through a special southeast Iowa Digital Archives website. With the exception of Fairfield, nearly all of southeast Iowa's newspapers are there. The company has quoted us just over $63,000 to scan, clean up, and upload searchable PDFs of our county's newspapers to a custom-made website and help us save our history. The Fairfield Public Library Foundation just approved a funding request for $10,000 to begin the project and make available the 60 oldest reels online. I plan to make a request for additional funding to the Greater Jefferson County Foundation in order to expedite this very important task. The community, any community members who wish to contribute specifically to this project should let us, should please make a donation and let us know this is their wish. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. It's truly an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Fairfield and our rural residents in Jefferson County. I hope to present a comprehensive report for fiscal year 23 in August or September and share with you more encouraging reports. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So exciting, all the new stuff online and this project, I hope the community really gets behind it. And go talk to Alex, he want to give a few dollars. So we need to save all that history.
We can pay as we go.
Yeah. So, any questions?
Yeah, I have one. I was just recently at the museum and talked with Jake Schmidt. So you two are working in tandem together on that project?
We are. We are. They have, I mean, they have lots of really big, expensive projects they're working on right now, so they don't, they can't afford at the moment to give us very much, but Jake did, he committed to definitely, you know, giving whatever the museum can.
Okay.
And this is definitely going to be a collaborative effort. It's not, it's, I mean, even though protecting these resources is the library's responsibility, the, this particular digitization project should be a collaborative one, and I would like as much buy-in from all organizations that have an interest to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many years do you think it will take for that project to be completed?
That's a great question. I, I don't think more than, more than a few years. I, I think they, the first, the first 60 reels, they can get up in six to nine months. And we have, we have 395 reels approximately with 1,000 images on each reel, and what they have to do is they, they, they scan them, scan kind of each, each image, then they have to actually cut it, they have to split it, because there are actually two pages for each image, and then it's often kind of skewed, so they correct that, and they also, they can also correct some of the degradation that's already occurred.
Well, I should think that the Jefferson County Foundation would be interested in that on an annual basis.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, so if anybody knows of any other grant opportunities, please again, share it with Alex, because it'd be nice to get this up and done in the next, you know, the sooner the better.
Right, right. The, the microfilm is starting to give off this vinegar smell, which is an indication that it's, it's, um, you know, it's going to be too late if we don't act soon.
Acetate, so it's, see the acid you're smelling? So it's degrading.
Alrighty, any other questions? Okay, well, let's move on to resolution actions and ordinances, and Alex is going to stay up there, because this is his action item that he's requesting. Consideration of Authorization to Purchase Certificate of Deposit, and this was some library, so go ahead, Alex, why don't you explain?
Yes, so, winter, winter of 2022, early winter, I believe is when, when the Fairfield Public Library sold the house that it, that we previously owned and had been renting. And the sale, the sale of that house was earmarked for a self-checkout system and an RFID conversion to the library's, of the library's collection. I spent about six months researching different, different options in terms of the RFID technology, and basically, in the end, it came down to two companies, and what, when I, when I looked at the, the five-year cost of the project, one, one of the, one of the companies, Biblioteca, would have run us over $100,000 over the course of five years, including staff time to implement the technology. The other kind of runner-up would have run us upwards of $70,000. The main reason why we were going to transition to RFID was so we could have a self-check, self-checkout system. And I'm really, I'm very, very much in support of a self-checkout system, because it will relieve some staff time spent checking out materials, and it will also allow some privacy to patrons checking out materials. The other benefit of RFID is that, and, and a self-checkout system based on RFID technology, it prevents theft. So I, I basically got to the point where I was asking myself, are we willing to pay potentially $100,000 to prevent whatever little theft might occur over the course of the next five years? The library used to, used to be much more protective of certain, certain kinds of materials, such as DVDs and CDs, DVDs which used to cost $30 each. Now, you can get these things for, you know, $10 each or something. It's, they're not very valuable, and fewer and fewer people are watching DVDs, and not that many people are listening to CDs anymore. So what, what I've proposed to the Fairfield Public Library Board is that we transition away from a security gate system of, of tracking potential theft and install an updated surveillance system. Our current camera surveillance system is very much outdated with really low-resolution images. Some of the cameras are actually only showing images in black and white, and the drivers for accessing the footage online don't even exist anymore. So we can't, we can't even access the footage the way we used to be able to. So what, what I'm, what I'm recommending, and this is kind of all part of the, this certificate, certificate of deposit issue, is that, well, some, some really exciting news that I'd like to share is that I've developed a relationship with Waki Public Library that uses the same kind of library collection management software that we do. And they, they actually use a self-checkout software that's built into the software we already have. All we need is just the, the devices such as a monitor, a receipt printer, and a barcode scanner, and we can actually build our own self-checkout for under $500. So my plan is, implement this, update our security system to, you know, identify potential theft, and six months from now, complete, complete a, a digital inventory of the collection and compare it with the inventory we've just completed to, to see what the theft looks like, and then six months later, run another inventory and look at that, and then reevaluate the, the need for our, an RFID conversion in a year. In the meantime, we have a certificate of deposit for the house we sold that is worth, it's, we, we have just sitting in this bank account $82,171.13. The library board would like to invest this in a local CD and then roll whatever interest accrues into this fund, and then a year from now, either reevaluate a convert, you know, reconsider a conversion to RFID, or invest these funds in another capital improvement project for the library. And my, my recommendation for a CD would be, at Midwest One Bank, a nine-month CD at 6.5 APY, and this has been approved by the Fairfield Public Library Board, and we would like to request your approval to make this investment of a CD.
I'm confused. It's my understanding that the Board of Trustees had full authority to set policy and take action, including setting salaries at the library, so why are you asking for our approval for this? Is it required by law?
Under the Fairfield's financial policy, it does require us to approve it.
Yeah, but can that policy override Iowa code?
I guess not.
I wouldn't think it would.
Yeah.
That's the only question I had, is that, I didn't, we never approved anything from the library like this before, and now there are two things and two more things that you're asking us to look at, so I was wondering if the board wasn't exercising its full authority, maybe doesn't understand its full authority, I don't know.
You could be right.
But I, I'd recommend approving it anyway, I suppose. It's already been recommended by the Board of Trustees to the council to approve it.
Yeah, I'll second it if you need it, so.
Just in case.
Yeah. Doesn't hurt. So it's been moved and seconded to approve this six-month CD? That's 6.1, did you say? 6.?
Two.
Is it a nine-month, nine-month CD, right?
Right, right.
6.5.
6.5, okay, great. That's a great rate.
Does that mean you come back to us in nine months and ask again?
See that one more time?
I said, does that mean you come back in six months and ask for permission to roll it into another CD?
No, you won't have to see me about this again.
Well, it only lasts nine months, so then you have to roll it over.
Oh, I, I don't think, I, I'll, I'll check in with Rebecca about the city's policy and...
Check the Iowa code, I think that you may not need to ask our permission.
So what are you saying specifically? You were talking, you were citing some Iowa code that talks about employment and salaries?
And policy.
And policy? Okay.
So, because I wanted to look it up specifically and read about the library board's authority at one point in time.
Okay, so this falls under policy then?
I thought they did need to ask us, is my understanding.
Okay. Okay. So any other questions for Alex regarding this? If not, please call a roll. Florenoy?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
The next action item is consideration to set a public hearing on the sale of property, and this is for our next meeting, April 10th at 7:00 p.m. Melanie, do you want to say something?
Excuse me.
I was going to tell you, you can't talk. So this is again, similar to the last action item, we're not 100% sure whether we need it or not. There are two trailers that have been through the, no, sorry, two RVs that have been through the impound process through the police department. We don't believe that we need a public hearing because they are private property that's been through the impound process, but we don't have a clear answer on it, so we thought we would be safe and go ahead and set a public hearing for disposal of these items. The property owners have been notified that they have so many days to pick it up and they, all that process, and they have not responded, so now it is property of the Fairfield Police Department, and the police department does not want it anymore, and so we would like permission to dispose of them through a silent bid. And so we're requesting for the public hearing at the next council meeting.
Is it an action item because there's no, because of the title? Or why?
Because we're setting a public hearing.
Because we're setting a public hearing.
Okay.
But how do they handle their other impounded materials? They've impounded...
They, most people pick them up.
Oh, and these have just been abandoned?
Yes.
So make the motion.
The bicycles are getting recycled, the, so a lot of things don't end up at this point.
And these are bigger items.
Yeah.
So make the motion to set a public hearing for April 10th, 7:00 p.m.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tuhill. Any other questions? Now please call a roll. Florenoy?
Yes.
Tuhill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next action item, consideration to accept wastewater treatment plant lighting project as final.
So this was a small project that we added in at the end of the wastewater treatment plant improvement project to use the last bit of USDA grant money. Some additional lighting was placed around the influent structure, and so the poles and the... And so the poles in themselves were purchased with USDA grant money. The rest of the funding was budgeted through the department. The work was completed by Moorefield Electric of Fort Madison, Iowa. At this time, the work is complete and final payment has already been submitted. All that remains is $2,190.70 of retainage. The work was complete nearly a month ago, so we asked that the project be accepted as final and the retainage payment made. And there is a two-year warranty period that begins at this point.
So is the motion to approve this as final?
I was so moved.
Thank you, Martha.
Second.
Second by Tohill. Any other discussion? Now please call a roll. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of award of Lamson Woods playground installation.
I'm going to let Stephen and Patrick come up and talk more about this. I've mentioned this in my project updates a couple times. There's a private group of individuals that has been working to raise money for playground equipment at Lamson Woods. And so this project is being ran through the foundation and through the city to benefit from our tax-exempt status. And so bids were received on it, and Stephen can talk more about the specifics of the project and the bids.
Thanks, Melanie. Yes, so I think it's been maybe even two years in the working. The Trails Council has been working to develop a playground at Lamson Woods. And the Trails Council has raised all the funding for the project privately, so there's no city financial obligations other than a little bit of staff time to process pay estimates and write checks. And so the project includes construction of four pieces of playground equipment in the grassy open space at Lamson Woods. I have a drawing, but I've been told that maybe engineering drawings are not really that fun to look at. So I have tagged in this catalog the four pieces of equipment that we're putting up if anybody wants to look. And so I'll talk a little bit more here while you guys can pass that around. So yeah, like I said, it's four pieces of playground equipment. The Greater Jefferson County Foundation has also contributed to the project. And the Trails Council has actually already purchased the equipment. So this project is just for installing it only and doing a little bit of site work and grading in the area to facilitate the construction. In terms of budget, we are... The bids came in very favorably. We had budget to spare even with where our estimate was, so we have no issue with where those came in in terms of cost. The low bidder, or I should say quote, this was a competitive quote, it was below the bid threshold. So that's why we're a little bit, got the cart ahead of the horse here because we did not have to do a public hearing for this particular project. The low bidder is Partner Construction, AKA John Loin, if you know him, right here in Fairfield. So we would recommend awarding it to Partner Construction. And I guess if you have any questions, let me know. We have not... Rebecca and I need to have a conversation still about how we're going to make all the money work, but we'll figure that out. Right now, all the money is at the Park and Rec Foundation is where that's being housed. And so it'll... Either you'll have to write a check and we'll pay you back, or we'll real quick write a check and then you can pay the contractor.
I'll make the motion that we award the...
I do have one question real quick. The one that denotes a mathematical error in submitting the bid. Is it going to affect anything?
No.
Is it... The total is the right amount? It's just that the unit price is incorrect, or?
It is correct. This is correct. The bid he submitted, he rounded up and he wrote in the extension $7,475 instead of $74.88. So his bid was technically lowered by 12 cents.
Got it.
And so in that situation, the unit price governs over the multiplication error. So no, and I did talk to John and told him that his bid was 12 cents off, and he was okay with that.
And he's really glad it was discussed tonight.
Yes, I'm sure.
So I'll make the bid to award... I mean, I'll make the motion to award the bid to Partner Construction for the installation of the playground equipment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any more discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of services agreement with Klingner and Associates. This is related to having them work on the new buildings for the parks, the new restrooms, I believe. And Melanie, do you want to say anything? Their estimate is in $7,600 to $9,600.
So with the electrical and HVAC particularly... Sorry, let me start over. With needing an office of one and a project of this size, I was looking for someone to do a quality control review of the drawings, particularly related to the ADA compliance. And that's how I first started talking with Klingner on this. And then as continued to get into the details of design, I needed some assistance with the electrical and the heating side of things. And so we thought it was best to do an hourly agreement. They'll start by reviewing what I have and giving me comments if it's stuff that I can easily correct. I'm just trying to think of something that they had already mentioned, you know, recommending a different style, going to a floor-mounted toilet rather than a wall-mounted toilet. The wall-mounted toilets, yes, are easier to clean under, but they are more susceptible to damage for people jumping on them, you know. So little comments like that are fairly easy for me to make changes on the plans too, but that they are giving those types of recommendations in the review, which is why they are requesting that this be an hourly contract. And so, yes, the estimate is $7,600 to $9,600 with possibly additional time if they need to do any drafting themselves. Again, this is part of the parks project that is being paid for by the foundation. I did review or let the foundation board, Parks Foundation Board, know about this at their last meeting, that there will be some bills from a subconsultant, and that works within the budget.
Great, thank you.
So I make the motion that we approve the services agreement with Klingner and Associates, PC.
Is there a second? Second. Second by Estee. Any additional questions? If not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, next we... I'm going to open a public hearing on the matter of nuisance abatement schedule of assessments. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this? I'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we will move on to that schedule of assessments. Are there any questions, council, to probably Weston? Not? Okay, take a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Moved by Estee?
Second.
Second by Tohill. Any other discussion? If not, please call a roll. Estee?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution, consideration of accepting donor gift and recording deed of transfer. This has to do with some property out at Waterworks Park. John, you going to explain this?
Yeah, let me explain. City engineer and I went to the Board of Supervisors today. We've talked with them a couple times about this in the last three months. This involves the Felger bequests, and we need about an acre and a half of land out at Waterworks Park to put the shelter and the kitchenette and restrooms in to benefit all of the different things that are out in the park area. I had been asked if we could bring it to the Board of Supervisors late in the month versus early in the month, so we did. And today, after we'd sent over this resolution as far as what we were going to do tonight and the resolution we proposed for Jefferson County to adopt, the county attorney and the assistant county attorney, Mike Brown, were not able to get this reviewed for us, so they said, why don't you give us another week? And we stressed to them it's important to us as far as our bid process on this project that we have control of the property by April 10th. And so Melanie had laid out a timeline. We went through that with the board. The board said they would definitely pick this up at next Monday's board meeting. So we're left with whether you want to pass this resolution tonight contingent on the board action, whether you want to table it until after you see if the board does what they say they're going to do or not. I trust them. And I guess the other thing would be we could do something different than the resolution you have in front of you. But their resolution will be three times this long and will authorize the Board of Supervisors to transfer the county property to us through an intergovernmental transfer, which is authorized in the state code if it's for a public purpose. So they're on board with that. Our resolution describes all of the things that are public purpose-related about this. So I think we're going to sail through, but it's up to you if you want to table this tonight, if you want to go ahead and pass a contingent on their action next Monday or do something different with the resolution than I've given you.
Great, thank you. What's your pleasure, council?
I would move that we go ahead and pass this tonight, assuming that they will be honorable.
Okay, contingent upon their approval.
Contingent, yes, contingent.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Tohill. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution, consideration of support of workforce housing tax incentive program application. Josh, you going to talk about that?
Good evening, council. In front of you, I had shared prior to the start of council a couple of visuals of a proposed project that might look familiar to some of you. This is a project that was proposed last spring also. It was a workforce housing tax credit application project with BAM Development Company. They're looking at... Their application was not approved last year from the state, the workforce housing tax credits. It's a very competitive project, so they're back again this year. Mr. Joe Mitchell is one of the project partners, and he's from Mount Pleasant and has some regional projects here with condo development. So what they're looking at is three fourplexes in Lincoln Court subdivision. This would finish out that development. So on the front is a proposed rendering on the plat. Two would face east towards South Court, and then one unit would face north to where the new Libertyville Road would be going through. These would be two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,200 to 1,400 square feet units with one- to two-car garages. These would be somewhere between workforce housing and market-rate units. And what we're looking at tonight and asking for is a resolution of support for two things. One is the workforce housing tax credit application, which, if successful, the project would start either this fall or in the spring. And then also a letter of support for local match. What you have in front of you is exactly what the council approved last year. So these resolutions are exact from last year, including the local match. Rebecca, I did notice that the letter of support wasn't attached. So I don't know if that's something... The resolution for the support of the application is attached to the council's agenda, but I didn't know about the local match letter.
Oh, I thought...
That was my question to you earlier about that missing letter. So is Exhibit A in our handout in front of us the attachment, whether that's supposed to delineate the local match support letter? Is that what that is?
Yes, yep. And this is the exact commitment that the council made last spring to this developer. Nothing has changed. The only change you might see is there might be a commitment to all two-car garages versus a mix of one and two. We're not talking specific development or specific commitments right now, but this could be in the range of $2.5 million development, plus or minus, in terms of devaluation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you for the second by Flornoy. Any further questions? If not, please call a roll. Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We'll keep you posted on the status of the tax credits and if he's awarded, the project will start this fall or in the spring.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Hopefully it goes through. We need more housing. Okay, next resolution, consideration of authorizing the issuance of general obligation capital notes, Series 2023, and levying a tax for the payment thereof. And you've seen this, this is for $7,600,000, $5 million for the fire station, and $2.6 for the Highway 1 project. Rebecca, what else do you want to add to that?
This just gives us the authority to levy for the taxes for the debt payment. This is not the note yet. That will come yet at a later date.
So we need a motion to move this to third reading? Is that correct?
This is the resolution prior to the ordinance.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Okay, moved by Tohill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any questions? If not, please call a roll. Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes. I just had a question about...
Yes.
So far, when I read this, it only mentioned the fire station, didn't mention Highway 1. Does it have to be in here?
No. We are planning on doing the extra money for Highway 1. We are not set on that. We did this resolution so we can levy for those tax dollars to pay the...
So just to be clear, the $5 million of that, $7.?
Yeah, only $5 is for the fire station.
Fire station, and the other is for, which will come later, the resolution for that.
Yep.
Already voted.
Okay. Next, we have ordinance 1223. This is the second reading. This is in North Campus Village. Again, it's the addition to Phase 5.
I'll make a motion to move it to third reading.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Tohill, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? If not, please call a roll. Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
All righty, under the mayor's report, I'll try to make this quick, but I've got several things here. First is a board appointment. Deborah Williamson, she's replacing Ava Boyd, who I believe is moving. So Deborah, I don't know if you know her. She's been around for a long time. She used to have a restaurant. She's got... She's a business person, she's got rental properties, very capable person. I think she's a great addition to beautification, so I would approve.
Make the motion to approve Deborah Williamson's appointment to the beautification committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Estee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say a sign. Thank you very much. Okay. Couple announcements to bring to the attention of the community. Emergency Management sent out a notice March 27th to the 31st, a severe weather awareness week. And, you know, this is the start of when they will start testing sirens. And they're going to test the tornado sirens on Wednesday, March 29th, beginning at 10:00 AM, providing we have clear weather that day. If there's any doubt, they will wait and not do that on Wednesday. So expect to... Expect that. And also, I encourage... And also, I encourage people to sign up at alert.iowa.gov. That's where you can sign up and get these alerts for your weather and things that are happening right to your phone. So it's valuable to sign up for that. Starting today, and then through April 2nd, the locker rooms at the Park and Rec are closed. They're installing the new floors, so that's exciting. But there are other, the other restrooms that you can use for shower and changing, et cetera. The city office will be closed on April 11th and 12th. That means City Hall here. For our software training, we are getting our new, whole new software. And so we'll have a couple days, sorry, we'll have to close down for these gals to learn everything. So that, again, is going to be April 11th and 12th, where the City Hall will be closed. Very quickly, I did talk to a member of the Evergreen Cemetery Board. They have an annual meeting in April, and then they're going to come and give a report after that. However, I want to let you know that there is approximately 37 acres at the cemetery. Approximately five of that is the old cemetery. The old Fairfield portion of the cemetery that belongs to the city.
So the city owns five acres out of 37?
Yes.
And there, as I can tell, their budget is somewhere in the order of 125,000?
I.
Could they bring their budget?
Yes, they are going to. Yes, and they are doing some, well, I'll just say that they're looking at some new things, and, but they're going to bring that and a report to us in April or May.
Again, I just want to remind the council that we're, even if their budget is $200,000, we are contributing $50,000 a year to support the cemetery.
Yeah.
But you already put that in the budget, passed it.
Yes. Okay. At the library, I went to the library meeting, and since we don't have a city administrator, I stood in for there. And you heard a lot tonight of what's going on at the library. There were a couple things that I wanted to bring back to council, just, or let you know. They're working on updating the room reservation policy, and they wanted city attorney opinion on some wording in there, so I've sent that over to John, and then we'll take that back to them to get the update. Also, they wanted a request to their employee handbook, and I asked them to get with you, Judy, as far as the personnel committee, to have that reviewed and bring it back to council. So that should be coming, too. I can't remember if I mentioned this last time, but I did follow up with Alliant regarding a possible solar project with Alliant out by the airport. And basically, the comment I got back was, it's in the queue to be reviewed. And so just waiting to hear if Alliant is interested in that project. So more to come on that. I had a meeting with a couple Alliant, no, AT&amp;T representatives regarding the newest cell tower that's out near South 17th Street. Dustin Blith, who is the AT&amp;T rep, plus another engineer, and a local citizen, Robert Smistic, who's been very interested in cell towers and the frequency at which they send off signals. And hopefully, people will be satisfied with what we found out. First of all, that that tower is not a 5G tower, does, has no plans to be 5G. It's a 4G LTE tower. And they could, one of the questions from Robert was, could they put more carriers up there? And yes, the answer is yes, they could put up to four carriers, but he said more likely, there would probably be no more than two, and they would still be under the FCC limits. They explained the readings they took. They took the tower up to its highest power possible, and even at that highest tower possible, the readings that they took were no more than a half a percent of the allowable FCC range. So it's very small, and that's also, there's another tower that's just a couple, three blocks west, and that would include that tower as well, because there would be some overlap. So at any rate, the power is very low, and some of the citizens, some citizens had concern about that. So that was good news to hear on that.
Do you want me to watch that is?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, just to point out, the towers that were put up by Nutella?
Mm-hmm.
50 watts.
Yeah.
Radio stations, 50,000 watts, different frequency, but.
Yeah. It might have been in that report, but, you know, I don't, it's like French to me, so I got the half a percent of the FCC readings. That's what I got out of that. So I have three things that I would like to send to the Ways and Means Committee with your approval. We, I got a letter from the supervisors requesting ARPA funds for the ambulance, that's one thing. We have a letter from the city attorney and his retainer requesting a little bit of an increase, and a possible FEDA project. So I'd like to take all the three of those things and have you approve to take them to Ways and Means.
I do want to point, it's not actually specifically for the ambulance, it's for the ambulance service in the new building. There's a different thing that we'll talk about here in a minute, about the ambulance itself, so.
Thank you for correcting me, because, yes, you are correct, so.
I make the motion to accept that reference.
Okay.
Second.
Second. With a move by Flornoy, a second by Toohill. Any discussion? Not, please, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you. And Doug has a couple of those letters, so he can put his meeting together. I think that's all, other than two other things, just two small things. Just to remind the community that Cinema Fairfield at the Arts and Convention Center has $6 movies, first-run movies, so if you're not getting that email, we're trying to get that, you know, people are trying to get that out there, that those movies are out there. And all I can say is, go Hawks! Watch the game on Friday, we're in the Final Four! So excited.
Oh, Alex left.
So that's all I have. City Attorney, your report?
Yeah, two or three things. I was going to speak up when there was some questioning going on with the library director, and Doug's right, there are some statutes that surround them. The library board is kind of like what the Park and Rec Board used to be, before we defrocked them a few years ago, because they had some problems overseeing their director. With the history of the library board, they've always been pretty independent. We have given them pretty much free rein, because they have been pretty responsible, and we get a bigger report from them than any other entity we oversee. But I think what went on here tonight is Alex brought you the information concerning a capital asset that was also considered by the council years ago, when they had the investment across the street to the north in the rental house. When they sold it, they also gave you a report on it, and I think at this point, he wants to be as upfront as he can about what's going on. Doug's correct, the library board does have the ability to just go ahead and make an investment on its own, but the other side of it is, I think they're doing this partly also because it looks good in the state audit review, if they see how nicely we mesh with them. And I'll leave it at that, but anyway, they are, they are unique as far as the statutory ability they have, plus the history they have of doing a good job of it. The second thing, we're having what I'm going to call an exchange of letters and emails with friends at the state ombudsman office. I don't think Rebecca's pulled all her hair out yet, but it's kind of frustrating, because they're, they're kind of shaking us down over something that is over complaints about our process on shut-offs after customers have been pretty much ignoring or apparently willing to be habitually delinquent. I've sent a little more detailed response letter, and I think we'll have some more discussion with Des Moines about things that could evolve out of the discussion. Our practice is basically, we give everybody a first bite letter, you know, please clear this up. Then we give them a notice of shut-off. The state's not sure that we're giving everybody the notice that they have a right to be heard before council, and basically to appeal if they want to. The problem is that I know enough about the legislative history on what that whole schematic is for enforcement, and limitations on what we do with due process, to know that the legislature looked at it the last time, when the legislature was reworking the Uniform Commercial Code, which basically sets rules for banks and how they handle defaults, and what kind of redemption and cure rights you have. And then the legislature was doing something else with something called the Uniform Consumer Credit Code, which essentially also dealt with a situation where there was a first bite letter followed by, next time, you're going to have to cure this by a certain date, or you're defaulted, and there's a big consequence. The utility notice provisions in the state code are different than the commercial code and the consumer credit code in one respect, and that is that both of those pieces of legislation, which are both federal and state, are accompanied with something that says, you get this notice and this courtesy about your right for appeal, and your right for being heard, and your chance to respond to what's going on with the enforcement mechanisms. You get that once every 12 months with both of those uniform acts, and then they don't have to give you that notice again. What happens with our utility is people can play this so they get about a six-week reach if they come back late in the month on their bill, and they say, well, I want to have a hearing and an appeal. And, okay, well, we'll schedule you out, but right now, our next council meeting is April 10th, and we wish we would have heard from you at the beginning of the month, during the first five days before we send you the first bite letter, and we'd have had this resolved by now. But that can happen over and over and over again, and it does, doesn't it, Rebecca, as far as some people? So we're stuck in kind of a conundrum as far as where can you go if it isn't in the statute? I don't think the people at the state level are going to change their statute, but the other side of it is, if it comes back to us on our ordinance, and it becomes more and more habitual, probably the other kinds of things you can do as far as enforcement mechanisms are put more teeth in. And that's things like having maybe a graduated scale of higher security deposits if people are shut off, and they come back and say, well, I really didn't mean it, the fact that I had six of these habitual delinquencies in the last 12 months. And we say, well, we're sorry, but now our rules are going to say that you have to double the security deposit if you are delinquent more than three times. I don't want to be that nasty to people as far as what they have to do to have public utility, which is one of our main governmental functions, but the other side of it, at some point, we have to call it what it is and say that some people have figured out how to play us. We are very courteous to people on the customer level, as far as trying to get them to just stay with us and pay. But at some point, there's got to be fairness in return, and get some balance back into this. So I'm not done with the conversations with the state side, but you'll probably be hearing from me again about this at least every other meeting into the summer. I don't think the legislature's going to pick this up as any big problem as they perceive it, but it's going to continue to be reviewed between us and the state as far as what else are we doing? Other than that, the state wants us to staple an additional sentence to our shut-off notices, and that's really not going to solve the problem as I see it, as far as the repetitiveness of the problem. So enough said about that tonight, but I, I'll fill you in as we're getting more. And then the third thing that's going on right now is, I'm waiting to talk with the county attorney and the hospital attorney on our ambulance board injunctive lawsuit, which is evolving into something else. And we're going to have an ambulance board meeting tomorrow, which Tom has some things to talk about, I think, as far as what's coming in the morning. But what's going on right now is, about a week and a half ago, the ambulance service provider, CARE, filed a motion to amend the answer that it filed about a month before that. And what it amounts to is procedural rules say that after you go through the time when you're allowed to respond to the suit we filed on behalf of the 2080 agency, you can't keep coming back with more without permission of the court. So there's a motion that is what I call permissive, asking to be permitted to amend the answer, to say some additional things, make an affirmative defense, and make a counterclaim. And they want to sue us over our specific performance of the contract, because what happened after they failed to do parts of the contract performance that they were enjoined from discontinuing, they turned around and took another part of the contract and stopped doing transfer services. When they did that, I believe this month, you correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, but I think they were supposed to get paid between March 10th and March 12th with this month's check from the three entities to CARE. And I don't think we paid them this month. Am I wrong?
No.
Yeah, so that's probably why they had their attorney come in and say, well, you're not in compliance now. But we told them ahead of time, you can't, after we've negotiated in good faith and got an agreement that this is the way it's going to be until next October, then come back in outside of mediation and tell us, well, oh, by the way, we're also not going to do this anymore, even though we've been doing it for the last two and a half years. So what we have happening right now is, the three lawyers for 2080 are filing first a resistance to that motion for permissive ability to go ahead and change their answer, and add an affirmative defense, and add a counterclaim. The court will probably hear that in the next couple weeks, so we can tell you what happened at the next meeting. But we also, there is a, they're trying to throw it back into arbitration or mediation, again, if they can, if we proceed on what they want to file. If they don't get to file that, I would expect we may have something going upstairs on an appeal level. The others, other part of this is our resistance to their motion to amend and to go to arbitration and bring up other things that weren't done at the mediation, when they had every opportunity in the world to talk about that, is we, in this county, had a lawsuit that went to the Supreme Court 40 years ago. It was called Jefferson County versus Barton Douglas Contracting. And it basically stands for the proposition that there are some things that don't lend themselves to arbitration, and unless you could have foreseen the kinds of things that we're in now in our 2080, in the Barton Douglas thing, there were 12 defendants, Jefferson County County Home was the subject. The engineers testified, and the architects, that nobody could have imagined they'd had some, some of the problems that came up between the contractors, subcontractors, the designers. And they were fighting with each other at the same time, and they were saying it should still go to arbitration. The Supreme Court said, this is just a good example of sometimes things that really aren't going to get resolved in arbitration if you're already fit for some purposes, being in court, just leave it in court. And I think the court already bought into that when they granted the injunction back at Christmas time. at Christmas time. And we had our hearings in January, and they still left it that way. So, I think we're still gonna be having arguments about the injunctive relief and just holding them to what the court said they're supposed to do, but at the same time, they're trying to inject some different issues in, which hadn't really been on the table until they said they don't wanna do transfers locally anymore. So, there'll be more on this probably every month until this summer, maybe until next October 1st, but that's what's happening on that end, and that's, that's the legal side of things. The 2080 is gonna have a meeting in the morning, and some of the things that are going to ways and means as far as the ambulance and so forth are on the agenda to be talked about. I don't wanna steal your thunder, Tom, as far as...
I don't have much to talk about, to be honest with you, so a couple things is all, so.
All right.
So, before you start, Tom, question. Have you heard anything from the, I think you were talking with the Attorney General about the EMA and the $2 per capita?
I have, I have, but we've only been there once.
Okay. I may put it back on the agenda.
All right.
I'd like to see that get paid personally, so.
Out of the current fiscal?
Yes, as we have it, I believe, for this year.
I didn't think out of the current.
Sorry.
I'll have to look. I didn't think out of the current, but I'd have to look for sure. I know of next fiscal, we have $2 per capita.
Yeah, okay. Okay, maybe we didn't.
I'd have to look for sure. The $2 per capita for emergency management?
Yes.
Was in their budget for this fiscal year. We've paid $1 per capita.
Right, and that $1 per capita was actually enough to cover the budget they submitted to the auditorium.
Well, that's irrelevant in some ways.
How?
Well, it's a legal opinion, according to Brett, Emergency Management Coordinator, he believes, and he can bring somebody down here, he says, that says, you know, that board approved a $2...
Right, my point is that their budget has to match with their levy. It doesn't.
Are you talking about this coming here or last year?
You're saying they're not supposed to be levying for a surplus?
If they have a budget for $100,000 and a $1 per capita levy covers that budget, how can they levy for $2 per capita?
Probably, I agree with you, they shouldn't.
So, we'll go back and...
Sometimes they're coming in with a partial surplus. They're coming in with a double surplus, so.
Sorry?
They're coming in with a surplus that's twice what they need, I think.
Yeah, I know they have sufficient funds.
I don't think this current year, that's the case, but we can go back and look at it, so. At any rate, I just wondered if you'd heard anything, so.
No, no, I haven't.
Okay. Economic Development, Patty.
This'll be quick. The only, we had one item on the agenda tonight, and it was the housing project that we already brought to you, or BAM Construction, that we talked about already, so that was the only thing on there. Do you want me to just go on to ambulance board?
Yep.
Okay, ambulance board, there is a meeting tomorrow. We did discuss a few things at the last meeting. Apparently, the amount that the, that we're splitting three ways for the new ambulance was agreed upon, I think we came up about $10,000 shy on our amount that we budgeted. So, I would recommend that we go back to ways and means and ask for an additional amount. Now, that, in addition to that, the $10,000 shy that, that we budgeted is still gonna be about, I'll get the exact amount, about $4,300 shy of what the actual ambulance is going to cost per, per entity. So, we'll be, we need to budget an additional about $1,433 roughly for the ambulance. The ambulance that we secured will be a new Ford 2023 F-350 truck with a refurbished box on it. This'll save us about $70,000 by doing it this way. We've had the refurbished box in the past, and everybody's been happy with it. So, the two advantages of that is it saves us a little bit of money, and we can secure the ambulance a lot quicker than ordering a new one, which they don't even know if they're gonna be able to get or not. So, this way, we're guaranteed one. It'll be, it'll be a brand-new, the rig itself will be brand-new, the box will just be refurbished.
Are you talking about fiscal year '24?
Um...
The $14,000?
Yes, the one that we just...
So, we...
Yes.
So, the lost...
I think we agreed, you'll, you'll know this more than I, I think we agreed to $50,000 or that we passed $50,000.
Sixty.
Sixty.
In the, in the lost funds, we allocated $60,000 toward the ambulance.
And was it 70 that they said were agreed to by each, by each of the three, so?
Okay, we didn't spend all the money this year for the lost. I think it was probably sufficient to cover the $10,000 anyway. I'll go back and look at the numbers.
And then the, the actual cost will be an additional about, that would, so 70 would be about $210,000 for the ambulance, and it'll be about $222,000, $223,000, I think is what it'll come to, if that's right. I'm, I'm doing the math off of what we're saying here.
Yeah, sounds right.
But I'll get you the exact figures after the meeting tomorrow as to what it'll be, so.
Okay.
We can do that without changing the budget, if we take it out of lost, which is where it would've come from.
Right, I would just want council approval to use the lost funds for that.
Right.
Okay.
I'll go back and look at the budget, see how much money's in there for fiscal year '24.
There were a couple other things discussed at the ambulance board. They've secured a location, they've had some applicants already that they said sound promising, so they're kind of in the process of, of getting it going, so at that step. Quite a bit, quite a bit of the meeting was in closed session, so I'm not really sure what specifics there, there are to discuss other than those three. Is there anything major I'm missing or should be talking about?
Oh, we're not yet, not, not ready to.
Right.
Make a release yet.
So, I, I think that, that would be it, then.
Okay, great. Board of Adjustment Minutes are there, too. Looks like Melanie's gonna talk about that.
No, that's all. That's all I was gonna say, is the Board of Adjustment Minutes are there, there's no variance, so there's no action item from the staff council.
No, don't go away, I have a question.
Okay.
Please. Got an email today about a shed being put up on a corner lot, are you familiar with it?
Very.
Okay, I'll have to find the email, you can explain to us what happened. Anyway...
Rebecca says they're coming to the next council meeting.
Did they put the shed up in the wrong location because of a corner lot?
Right. Um, first of all, I would say probably the biggest, easiest thing to say that there is of issue is that the shed is in the right-of-way.
Oh, it's in the right-of-way?
Yes. I mean, not only does it not meet setbacks for a corner lot, but it's also in the right-of-way, so.
Okay, so when they apply for permitting...
It's on the wrong side of the right-of-way.
Right, yeah, it's on the wrong, it's on the wrong side.
Well, it can never be in the right-of-way regardless, but when they apply for a permit, do they have to submit a drawing of where the...
So, what we believed happened on this one is that this individual seemed very understanding, and it's a portable shed, so they're fairly movable, and we felt like this individual understood what we were talking about, and we issued the permit thinking that the, we were on the same page as the individual, and typically, we do require a drawing. We do not have a copy of a drawing in our file. There is a disagreement over whether a drawing was submitted or not, but we do not have a drawing in our file. We have a, we call it a cheat sheet that shows where you can put an accessory building, and we thought we had explained it to this individual, and again, it being a portable shed, we thought, well, if they put it in the wrong place, at least it could be moved, and that, that individual doesn't feel that way at this point.
There's no concrete slab or anything like that under it?
No, no, there's rock under it.
There's gravel, gravel under it.
Gravels on, on.
And it is a really big shed.
Yeah.
How big is it?
It's 12 by 20, I believe.
Sitting in the right-of-way part of it?
Yes.
And there, there is room on the back of the lot to put it. I mean, they, they do have room...
Right.
In the, on their lot that will meet all code requirements.
A tiny question here, I just got the email, didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, they'll, they've submitted a request to come talk to council about it, and it is, I mean, we, we did make the error of submitting or approving it without a permit or, I mean, without a drawing. I will say, we often get people wanting a permit when the trailer or the delivery truck is sitting in the roadway, and they wanna know where they can put it, you know? So, I don't remember all of the situation with it as far as why we, you know, hurried up, but believe me, we're not gonna do that again.
My other thought was, on the permit itself, is there a box you check that informs the city that it's a corner lot instead of a non-corner lot?
No, there is a box that says, regardless, basically, that what I'm submitting is true, true and honest, and complies with all city regulations. So, even if we don't catch everything that might not be correct with a permit, you know, maybe someone's putting in a six-and-a-half-foot tall fence rather than a six-foot fence, if we don't catch the half on their drawing notes because it's ineligible, they are still swearing that it meets city code.
Well, right, if they had submitted a drawing of where this shed was going to go, you would've been, obviously, it was a corner lot.
Right.
Because it triggers certain things to happen if it's a corner lot compared to a non-corner lot.
Right. The drawing that the property owner has, we don't believe, if we saw that drawing, that we would've issued a permit. Had we seen those drawings, that, the issue is the property owner's claiming that this is the drawing that he submitted with the application. We don't believe we saw that drawing when we saw the application. I also believe one of the things that happened was when the property owner called in the one call. You know, if you've ever called in a one call, if there's not a utility there, the utility company puts a flag that says, okay. I believe that that was misinterpreted to be an approval of the location.
Oh, by the city.
By the city.
I see.
So...
Well, there's no drawing on file, and we've never lost any of the drawings before, have we?
Not to my knowledge.
For reference, though, if somebody were to submit a drawing and you saw that it was going to be on the right-of-way, what would the process be with them? Would it, would they have to get a variance, or, you know, would that trigger some other...
We would deny it.
Or you'd just deny it?
Yeah, or, you know, like a portable shed, like, in this case, we would say, you know, here's your other options, you know, we deny it. A better example I can give is we've, we had to deny a signed permit recently, and we said, okay, you know, you meet the size, but the location doesn't meet, so here's the other locations you could put that, is the way we responded to them in the denial. And so, that's what we would do, you know, on an accessory building. You know, since a lot of times our, we, we have, on our approvals, we have an approval, we have an approved with corrections, because a lot of times, there might be something like, oh, everything looks great, but they just don't, they're not far enough away from the house, or they forgot a dimension, like, everything on the drawing looks fine, but maybe I've added a note to clarify or remind them that it needs to be six feet from the primary structure. I'll mark that in red on the drawing, and then when I approve it, I approve it with corrections. And so, then it's got my correction in there, and then it's also noted on the approval that I made a markup on there, so that it's pointed out to the property owner that, hey, I made a change to your drawing, so. And Dawn does a great job of pointing out those changes to the property owner, too. And if it's, if it's more than just a simple, you know, adding a dimension or sometimes correcting a person's math error in, in a closing a perimeter or something like that, we'll deny it and ask for another drawing, reject and resubmit. We've done that before, too, you know? Yeah, your concept works, but your drawing is so bad, we can't approve it, and we've done that before, too.
And I think what they're asking for, too, is they want the city to pay to have the shed moved...
Right.
To an approved location. They felt like we were at fault, and they're not, we're not telling them they have to get rid of the shed. They, they have room on the lot to put the shed in an approved location, but they're wanting the city to move it there. And I think one of the other, and I know we'll probably get into this next week, and I'm, I'm not trying to pile on or anything, but I think one of the issues, too, is that they originally were going to apply for a fence permit, too.
Yeah.
And then they said they were gonna do that at a later date. Well, they went ahead and put the fence up without the permit, and now they can't move the shed back to where they want to because the new fence is gonna be in the way, so.
Oh, boy. I didn't know that part.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's, I, I think that's one of the issues, too, so it'll be a more expensive move probably than, than they'd bargain for because they're gonna have to tear the fence out to move the shed to the appropriate spot.
So, just to be clear, did the city make a mistake by not recognizing it was a corner lot at the time that the permit was issued, or...
We made a mistake by approving, approving a permit without a clear drawing.
Okay.
We were under the impression that it was going in a different location. We checked, we always look everything up on Google or on Beacon, so I feel very confident in saying that we would've recognized that it was a corner lot, but what we should've done is made sure that we had better documentation to make sure that we were on the same page.
We needed a drawing.
What?
We needed a drawing.
Yeah, we should've, we should've denied the permit until we had a drawing that we agreed on.
Okay.
Okay, well, looks like we'll take that up again next week.
Yeah.
Okay, project update.
Just once, can I be at the beginning of the council meeting instead of the end? Just once. Um, okay, so the first thing that I wanna talk about is the Highway 1 improvement. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow, so we'll know a lot more as far as the schedule of the closures, when we're gonna start seeing work. We will start to see actual construction, I think, happening almost immediately after that. As far as when we will see full road closures, I think we're still looking at a month, but I will have more information after tomorrow. We're meeting with the contractor and the utility companies at 1, and then we've scheduled a meeting with emergency services and the school district at 2 to talk specifically about the stages and the closures so that we can continue to keep them up to date on that. The 2002 street reservicing was a project carried over from last year that includes an overlay of Grand Park, Little Fawn, and some seal coat streets. The people in that neighborhood received door tags last week that they were going to start work today. The contractor called me after we already hung the door tags and said that they're gonna start that the first week of April, they're gonna wait till April 3rd. They, we wanna wait until the city crews have finished the work on Liberty Drive, and then the contractor will come in and start patching on Grand Park. So, right now, Grand Park is the detour for Liberty Drive, so that's why the contractor's waiting. So, if anyone on Grand Park or Little Fawn is listening, that's why the contractor is not working this week. And then, lastly, so we've made a post on Facebook, and the planning office sent out letters to contractors that we have on file. It's been a couple years since we've updated our list, but we allow contractors who provide us with copies of their insurance. us with copies of their insurance and bonding if they do work in the street. We allow them, they are put on a list, then the list is made available to the public, and so when someone calls in and says, you know, who does curb stops or who does sidewalk work or anything like that, we can point them to this list. We opened, last year, we opened the list up to really any contractor, whether it's interior landscaping, even lawn mowing companies, as long as they have the levels of insurance that we are requesting, they can be put on that list. So, any, I'll say any handyman or go-getter that wants their name to be made available to the public can provide the planning office with that information. And this will eventually work, you know, this, this will tie in like with our rental inspections as we're doing heat source. If HVAC contractor registers with us now, then they're already on file, and then that helps with our rentals, that they don't have to re-file their certificates. Or, if they register with us now and they're an earthwork contractor, they go to do someone's sewer lateral, they don't have to turn that in every time they do somebody's work, they can just turn it in to us once a year. So, it helps them with the paperwork, helps us to make sure that we have, that the contractors have insurance, and then it provides a service to the citizens, so that there's a list of those licensed and insured contractors. So, again, talk to the planning office if anyone has questions on that. We put some information out on Facebook as well on kind of how to go about doing that. That is, any questions on the rest of the project update? All right, thanks.
Rebecca, do you have anything?
I don't think so.
From administration?
Yeah, I think you got it.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Moved by two-hill, second by ham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.